Calling this meeting to an order at 6:00 PM. We have a roll call, all board members are present this evening. Any public comments on closed session? Sign that we then adjourned to...
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We reconvene our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. For roll call, all our board members are present, and if I can have Superintendent Lees.
Yes, please stand.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To report on actions from my closed session. Conference with Legal Council, anticipated litigation, claim 657473. Ms. McFarlane motioned and Mr. Navas second, and the board rejected the claim 657473 by the following mode of seven i's then zero n's. Student Matters, Placement of Non-Public School Students Changes. Mr. Navas motioned and Ms. Alexander second. We approve, the board approves the placement of non-public school students changes number 81 by the following mode of seven i's then zero n's. of non-public school students changes number eighty-one by the following vote of seven i's and zero no's. Placement of non-public school students new. Mr. Navas motioned, and Ms. McFarland second, and the board approves the placement of non-public school students number one zero four and one thirty-six by the following vote of seven i's and zero no's. For superintendent's evaluation. Per section ten of the superintendent's contract, the Lodi Unified School District Board of Education completed the superintendent's written evaluation for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The board deemed the superintendent's performance as progressing acceptably or better in all areas. As such, this notification that the superintendent's contract was extended by the board but for one additional year, July first, twenty twenty-seven through June thirtieth, twenty-two thousand and eight. Public hearings. We declare the intent to convey easement to the city of Lodi for Turner Academy West Project number zero eight two nine, eight four two nine, open. Do we have any board comments on this? Any public comments? And declare the public hearing closed. Declare the categorical exemption for the Toque High School Athletic Field, zero eight zero zero, five eight zero zero, six zero zero, zero zero one, and pool renovation, zero eight two five, eight four two five, six zero zero, one zero project as required by the California Environmental Quality Act, open. Any board comments on that? Any public comments? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed. We move on to a superintendent's report.
Yes, Dr. Paul, members of the board, a couple things I wanted to bring to your attention as we get closer to the start of the school year. First, I'd like to introduce to everyone Brittany Arnett. She is our new director of communications, and she started with us July seventh and didn't have an opportunity to slowly get up and running because there's lots going on as we prepare for the new school year, but Brittany, if you want to wave to the crowd, that gives everyone an understanding of who you are, so. And Brittany is off and running, and so I wanted to bring to your attention a couple things going on. The first is, if you go to the main page of the website, one of the things you will find as you scroll through it, it is back-to-school checklist. It is letting our parents and families know what to be thinking about. Know this well, making sure people go to bed on time, making sure they're getting up early enough to prepare for the new school year. And if you click on it, Michael, you can see that on that, there's some information and checklists to prepare families for this as the beginning of the school year quickly approaches. Next, I wanted to bring to your attention the cell phone policy. Skip that one, yep. Be present, so phones down, heads up. Lodi Unified School District is committed to creating connections in the classroom, and this is a push the board has started us on, and the goal of which is to keep our kids engaged in learning, engaged in socially interacting with each other. And you'll find here that not only are the important information, but as you scroll down, you're going to see some frequently asked questions, helping our families understand. We do know that there are families who have medical conditions that require having a cell phone, and we do know that through medical plans and our IEPs, those are provided through those processes, and otherwise, the expectation is all students. From the minute you started Lodi Unified through your twelfth grade year, the minute you come onto campus, and the minute you leave, cell phones are away and not being accessed so we can engage our students. So, wanted to bring this to your attention, to make you aware, and third, not that I'm hearing rumbling throughout the community, we know lots of projects during this short summer are happening. There's concerns about grass growing, there's concerns about cement being poured, and I know that Edith Holbert and the Vainus team are working hard, as is the facilities team, getting everything up and running, but periodically, like a home remodel, you find something behind a wall or under the concrete that sets you back a couple weeks, and Vinewood is going through some of those. We did inform a Vinewood school today, and it's on their homepage, and if you look at the message from Principal Ben Coe, it'll give an update to our Vinewood community that'll let them know, and if you click on the red construction and student drop-off zones, it'll give you a clear picture where things will be when school starts up. And we do know it's challenging, but we are looking out for the best interests of our families. The answer to the rumor mill that we weren't going to start the new school year at Vinewood until September is false. We are ready to get going, and there's no need to wait. I know, nice try, kid. Sixth graders, sorry, you got school. So, just wanted to give you a picture of the types of things going on behind the scenes to prepare. We do know there may be some grass that doesn't look so green. We also know that we have a team ready to hydroseed and start watering as soon as some of this important concrete work dries. So, some of these updates you can find here, but as we get closer, be patient with us as we are trying to get these things done and working with a lot of different construction companies to put our schools back in order in short time. So, I have nothing further to share, but I at least wanted to bring that to your attention because I'm sure you're probably hearing from people as well. And this is a great way to redirect them and remind them that school will start, and that's at every school. So with that, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Me and this was great, and I applaud the kids who tried, but we're starting school. Public comments on consent agenda A. The public may address the board on consent agenda A, routine business. Each public speaker shall limit their comments to three minutes. Please state your first and last name before you start speaking.
Good evening. I almost said good afternoon, good evening, members of the board, Mr. Young, Lisa Leonard-Wilkins, President LEA. Yeah, a consent agenda A, going through item A1, contracts list. I see on our contracts list, we have four hundred and ten dollars, four hundred and ten thousand dollars, excuse me, directed just for legal fees, and we know that this is just the beginning. Two hundred thousand of that is going to Kingsley Bogart, who negotiates the CSEA and LEA contracts. We still don't have a contract negotiated from last year, and in my humble opinion, I think that part of it has to do with having the law firm involved. Also, there's some significant expenditures for curriculum that are not transparent. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, to Corwin Press for only one, two, three, four schools. What, I don't understand what that's about. Seven hundred and ninety-five thousand to Curriculum Associates to provide professional learning services throughout the district. I'd like to know more about that. Oh my gosh, it just goes on. We have a bunch of Keenan things, and then Teaching Strategies LLC, custom coaching support, would love to know more about that. And then finally, and this has been a thorn in my side for years, is the agreement with Jerry Adams Management Consulting, a hundred and three thousand dollars to provide security consulting services. Why are we not using LE, Lodi employees to do that? Why do we have to hire an outside consulting firm? Thank you. So, any, going to answer my questions about some of the consultants?
Since it's a comment section, I'm going to let the comments finish, and then we'll get to it.
Hi, Anzuela Garcia, community member. I'm also, I have a question about the contracts because I noticed there's more than one attorney on the contracts, Mr. Porter, multiple attorney offices, and then again, if we add that up, it's almost one-third of what it would cost to give teachers one percent.
Nikki, can you give us any clarification on? I'm going to go just to one of the topics that was mentioned, which was the professional development.
I do know that Dr. Horton can speak to the different aspects, and specifically those contracts.
Yeah, getting out a little bit of color to that. The Corwin contract is for school teams to go to the PLC plus professional development to support principals and teacher teams and their leaders to learn how to conduct successful team meetings in their grade levels and departments. Curriculum Associates is our math curriculum provider for K-8 Math, and this is ongoing coaching support to support our teachers in rolling out and using and being effective with K-8 Math. Teaching Strategies LLC is our TK curriculum provider, so this is coaching support to support our TK teachers in their classroom throughout the year.
Then you find that to be a critical place to spend some of the dollars?
I do. I think that these things are wonderful supports to provide to our teachers, have an ongoing support network for the work that they do, and with Corwin to also support the principals and teacher leaders on how to conduct PLC from a visible learning perspective.
Thank you. Would the board like, or the staff like to pull anything from the consent agenda A?
Hopefully, one please.
Sure.
Would like to pull A. And. Say A. Yes.
And Chairman, I move we approve the rest of consent agenda A.
I'll second.
Thank you. May I have a board vote, please? Thank you, motion passes seven zero. Can we go to ID one, Mr. Porter?
Yes, I have a couple comments, well, I have quite a few comments. My first comment is, I don't like how this is all bundled into one thing. And what I mean by that is, there are various different things going on here, all the way from security with our resource officers, to Jerry Adams, to our lawyers, and so forth. To bundle it into one item, and then we have to vote, because there's some things I want to go yes on, and there's some things I don't want to go yes on. As you know, the city of Lodi right now is struggling with some errors that occurred from management, and the city council approved them because they didn't have enough information. Well, that error falls on the city council because they approved it, and I guess basically because of a lack of information. I have a hard time, first of all, with the legal firms, I believe it's, and then of course, I'll throw Jerry Adams in there as well. One, nine, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty are the issues that I have, and I like to have them removed from this document and table, did we go to bid? Because I think we're negligent if we haven't. I have no idea what they do for us, other than the little blurb that's here on the paper. And as far as Jerry Adams goes, it's a three-year contract for a man that's, I don't know, is he in-country, out-of-country? What's his work, is he calling you and telling you when he's available? I do know that we had a lockdown at Toque High a number of years ago that went sideways, and when the principal was asked about the lockdown time, he said he would have waited till after lunch, and was told that Jerry Adams and Kathy Walker wanted to do it during a bunch, and it turned into a fiasco. So, I struggle with a lot of this. The fact that there are no bid contracts, I want to go on record for this, in case this is a blowback bothers me, and I really think this district needs to look at retainers, first lawyers, to look at what they offer. All you know is what you know, and if this, these are the same people you've been dealing with for over thirty years, what else is out there? And we all want to improve and reflect and get better, but what I see here is just a bundle for us to approve, and we have very little information that could be sent to us in an email on what they provide and how it was designated they received those monies. All we get is this right here. So, I don't know the correct Robert's Rules of Order, but I'd like to pull out one, nine, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty, and have more information for our board to look at, and then vote on the other ones so we can move forward with that. So I like to table those if I can, I don't know the correct procedure, because I am really suspect that we are giving out this money, and I'm uncomfortable with the process and how it's been done in the past.
Are we bound by any contracts that we will be deflecting from if we are not fulfilling it as it's presented today, and in future, we need more breakdown on these?
I don't know for sure, not having each individual contract in front of me.
Sure.
I would, there's a couple pieces that need some clarification. There are certain areas that require a bidding process, and we need to clarify which area, as I know with facilities, that is an area that you are required to do so. So we have one aspect of this. The second is, the reason these come under consent is because contracts are a regular, weekly part of it, and so they come under that, and we certainly, on any of these, can pull them and provide more detail. As it pertains to legal matters, I wouldn't want to get into details about what specifically they're involved with, as it pertains to legal matters you and as a board and the district has with lawsuits, or contract disputes, or claims, whatever it might be. I mean, I know that Bogart's office comes up periodically, and I know that they have represented us, not just in negotiations, but employee matters, and they've done that historically. So, when I hear Mr. Porter, and if I were to do this, what I think is probably the best way is, yes, because this is consent, we bring it as one item. I would suggest, if there is a specific contract you want removed, that each one of those is done individually so that we can record each one, and then you can approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. I would also not recommend you table it because that would require us to return next week, next board meeting with all of that information, and if the board is determining they want this information, we've got to make sure we can pull all that information. So, Mr. Porter, does that make sense to your question?
My question was twofold. One, why don't we go out to bid? Services provided, I don't want to get into the legal matters because that's confidential, but I know what, I do want to know what they're providing to our district, what we get for their dollar, and none of that is here. And also in regards to Jerry Adams, who else uses a security individual like that? What is Stockton doing? What is Elgro doing? I know that Mr. Adams is, you know, local, and he was a police captain and so forth, but, you know, what are other school districts doing in regards to that?
Certainly, I can look and do a broad look at that, but I can also tell you where school districts, like Stockton Unified, has a police force as part of Stockton Unified, they may have a different way in which they do it in light of that. As far as districts that don't have a police force, I can look at that. I do know, for example, any unified school district has a consultant to assist them in matters like this. We have maintained our relationship with Jerry Adams because not only does he know our schools, he also has been Homeland Security trained, Homeland, yeah, services trained, and he's been FBI trained, and he has worked with our schools for a significant amount of time. The last three-year contract ended, and so he submitted for another three years. We pay for each year as we go, it's just his standard contract over the three years, but the services aren't provided, then the consultant doesn't get paid, so.
You're, all you're doing is, all you know is what you know.
Okay.
So, when I said to you number one, nine, sixteen, oh, excuse me, one, nine, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty, those are legal firms that we've used before. I don't know if there's other people out there that are offering something better. It could very well be that these are the best of the best, and I'd be very happy with that, but when you ask me to approve such a large bundle, and I don't have information to support that decision, I struggle with that. I brought this up at last meetings, I bring it up ad nauseam, because to me, one, I don't understand why we don't have a retainer for when we do negotiations, or why we even have a legal representative. So what I'm asking for is proof of what they do, what did it go to bid, and, you know, is it that validated? Or is somebody we just feel comfortable with and where we go with it? Is Jerry Adams just a comfortable shoe? I don't know. Maybe he's the best in the area. You said homeland security, FBI. I've heard this before. What do other districts do? I don't know.
Would you rather have?
May I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Porter, on all these items here, they have a person that you can contact at the end to find out, and if you would call before this meeting, I'm sure they would give you the information that you're requesting.
I think, Mr. Navah, part of this meeting is to open it up to the people to see things as well.
I understand that.
And, Mr. Navah, I want to go on record myself of how I feel about this process in case there's blowback.
Yes, you can go on record on that, but you should, you should consult these people that are, that are responsible for these items here. I called several of them and I got a message from them, and I'm satisfied with it. I don't have to waste time at the board meeting to.
So you're saying that right now I'm wasting your time?
We're wasting time because you didn't contact the person that's in charge.
You're wasting, I'm wasting your time, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you're wasting time.
I don't think so.
Well, let's not, let's not have an argument.
Why don't you contact the people?
Mr. Navah and Mr. Porter, I just want to interject for a moment here, and I'm going to request Neil to kind of guide us into, are we able to pull some of these items and get more information? And can they come back for, on the agenda? Or is it something that means absolutely necessary voting tonight?
Well, I mean, this is work. This is the scope of work that they have done.
Sure.
And we're bringing it back. It comes back at the beginning of every year for a new year. We can certainly provide more information. If a board member wants to recommend that we approve the consent agenda, but pull certain items off, request for information, they can certainly request that. Someone needs to second that. And then the board would have to vote on that. And if that's what the board's interest is, then we can provide more detailed information for you as board members.
Sure.
So, Mr. Burnell, I do agree with you on some of them. When I look at items sixteen and seventeen regarding the Keenan and Associates, we made a decision to go with that JPA seven, eight years ago. So the costs that they're having are very much in line with their contract. I don't need to see it. I understand what the contract means. I can't contact people if I have questions, but a hundred and thirteen thousand for an ongoing contract for the administration percent, it's very, it's in line with the industry. When I look up here at a Red Safety Professional Program, do I know what that means? No. But I know what they're doing over a three-year period for loss control. I understand it. It's a world that I'm familiar with. So those two, if we were to pull them, I would have to vote against that because I have done my research, not that you have not done, and not that you, we are wasting your time, Mr. Navah, but that I think where we have questions on some of these, their explanations are streamlight. And so I understand the concern by Mr. Porter. But on some of these, I, I think we are kicking the can, especially on the Keenan's. I won't comment to the other one. Mr. Adams, we have talked about ad nauseam for years. I think, and I'll go back to my concern, I, I can't say whether Mr. Adams is doing an amazing job. I know he comes with a lot of credentials, but I do have fear and my concerns were, and they were, I voiced them at least four years ago, that do we have a succession plan? And what happens if he is, if he is not available when we need him? So, I mean, there are concerns associated with contracts. It doesn't mean I can't vote for them.
So I am suggesting, and I'm going to request you to guide us to that, that other than Keenan and Associates contracts and those two, rather than the Keenan and Associates, so fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, sorry, three of them, if we can, if there's a board member who would like to pull the ones that you want more information on, and we vote on the rest of them.
I'll defer to Board Member McFarlane because she has expertise in this. And if she feels comfortable, then I feel comfortable.
I don't like them. Don't give your own foot there anymore.
No, I understand. And you have background, and I trust.
So you're willing to pull one, nine?
It'd be fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, that's correct.
They stay in. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen stay in. So one, nine, fourteen, eighteen, and twenty, you'd like to pull, Mr. Porter, and get more information?
Yes, President Ball.
Okay. I need a motion to pass.
You need a motion to.
Chairman, I move we approve the rest of those items, please.
I'll take a second, please.
Would it be okay if I make a comment before we motion? I've been.
Sure, please.
So one of the questions I did have, because I sent lots of questions on the disparity on the police force for twenty-two, three, and five, and the, the request was just making sure that as we go forward for the Stockton schools as finding and aligning with Stockton for those resources, since they are only providing one resource officer for that hundred and sixty-two, which in comparison to Lodi is a significant higher cost for the one person for full-time officers. That disparity impacts the, those schools. And considering where those schools are, we might need to evaluate that.
We have an interest in more SROs in Stockton. They have staffing issues, and their priority is direct services, call services. I think two years ago, we couldn't get an SRO in the Stockton schools. But that was, again, service. So we do have the contract. They are providing the SRO. The city of Lodi also provides additional money, and they share money in the city of Lodi SRO program. We have the two, and then they, they provide four, but I think they participate in the cost of that, whereas the city of Stockton does not. So that, that's another reason that the disparity. As a district, we would love a lot more SROs in Stockton. We're limited by what they're able to provide us.
Okay. Well, thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Please, I need a second for it.
What is the motion that's on the floor?
The motion on the floor is we are approving all action items, all items on consent agenda A except for one, nine, fourteen, eighteen, and twenty.
I second that.
Can I have a board vote, please? Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Items one, nine, fourteen, eighteen, and twenty have been pulled from A one. Mr. Young, are we able to bring them back with more explanations the next board meeting?
I can certainly provide the board more information so you understand. I would have to, ironically, I'd have to seek legal advice about what I can share regarding what is legally allowed to be shared. I know information has been shared with the board in the past about the different legal groups, but I have to be very careful not to disclose information that's really privy not to the public because they are legal matters. But I will provide a general overview of the difference on one of what AALRR provides on nine, as far as how we use Dennis Waller and Kelly. And fourteen, as pertains to Jerry Adams, and ultimately, we can bring back. The board has an interest in not continuing. We can put out for bid to see if others are interested.
I'd like to do that.
That's something that I can bring back and you consider.
You have to bring it back for us, too, yes.
If that's the interest, but I, I don't know yet because it's not a topic at this point since where we are. I'm just trying to be careful with this. And then with twenty, you had twenty on there with one eighty, is that correct?
Eighteen and twenty.
Twenty, I had a comment about, just a comment. On twenty, I believe that's the one eighteen center.
That is correct.
I went on their website today, and awesome program, you know, and all that. But I'm questioning the separation between church and state. What I read were a lot of biblical prayers and things like that, and we're providing them with money. And they talk about God and things like that in their, their webpage that, that they associate with. I'm wondering if we are out of compliance there with the separation between church and state. I know that many of our students either don't believe in God or have a different deity that they pray to. So I'm kind of concerned about our relationship with Keenan one eighty.
At this point, you have pulled that information, and that's what the board approved, so we can provide additional information.
But I'm sharing with you.
Okay.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you. So you have stuff to bring back to us, and I just need to know if this needs to wait till next meeting or are you going to bring it back?
Yes, it will have to be at the next meeting.
Will you be getting other bids as well?
At this point, I, I have to bring back more information to the board and then get direction if that's your interest. I would bring that back for the safety consultant and get direction from the board if that's what you want to do. It's not required under the law to go for open bidding process like you would with facilities.
Would this be a closed session item?
No, because this is a contract, a contract issue.
Okay.
And this would need to be discussed as a report, and then you give me direction if you want to bring back for action different bids.
Okay, thank you.
If you're looking at, I'm sorry, looking at the contract for Mr. Adams as it's coming in as a three-year contract, could it be adjusted to a one-year contract within, I mean, I know this gets a little sticky-wicket there, but coming back with a three-year contract, is that just the, I'm a little concerned about that.
It's a standard operating procedure to do a three-year contract. There's nothing that precludes us from doing it for the twenty-five, twenty-six year and then considering in twenty-six, twenty-seven and opening it back up as well. That, those are different ways of looking at it.
I'm kind of contract-headed out, so I don't want to.
Well, you may be next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. I'm going to move on to item A eight. Ms. Lenderman.
I'm excited to see, mostly just wanted to highlight all the work that has been going on by Ms. Church and all of the staff and the cabinet. And seeing four pages of replacements and backfills is awesome. And then I'm very excited to see Ms. Campbell on that list. So, yeah, I think overall, this is, makes me feel much better as a board member not seeing my vacancies or the number of people leaving greater than the number of backfills. So thank you very much for all the hard work.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can I have a board vote, please? Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to public comments on other action items. The public may address the board on other action items. Each public speaker shall limit their comments to three minutes. Are there any public comments on other action items? Signal, I am moving on to other action items. Item OAI one, AB twelve hundred documents for Joe Serna Junior Charter School, Ms. Warren.
Thank you, President Dr. Ball, members of the board. So this is the public disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement for Joe Serna Classified School Employee Association. The deal has estimated impact, fiscal impact on their charter schools' general fund of about two hundred and forty-three thousand.
Any board comments?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. You take board vote, please.
Who has a second?
Thank you, Ms. Warren. And we missed saying that. I appreciate your looking through all of what we need to get this done. Thanks. Can we, is it? Thank you. Thank you, Michael. You're the best. All right. Motion passes seven zero. Item OAI two, provisional internship permit and approval, Ms. Church?
Yes, for your approval tonight is a provisional intern permit for one of our high school teachers.
Any board comments?
I move we approve.
I'll second.
And board vote, please. Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Item OAI three, resolution twenty twenty-five seventy-six intent to convey easement to the city of Lodi for the Turner Academy West, project number zero eight two nine eight four two nine, Ms. Warren.
Good evening, President Dr. Ball, members of the board, and Superintendent Young. Before you, this evening is a resolution to authorize the approval of two public utility easements for your Turner West Academy to be opening soon.
Any board comments?
I move we approve our resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-six. I'll second.
Thank you. Can I have a board vote, please? Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Does this make the traffic flow easier for Turner again? We'll see. All right. Well, thank you. We're opening up to public comments on reports. The public may address the board on reports. Each public speaker shall limit their comments to three minutes. Please speak your first and last name before you.
Just, just before, Ms. Lenderman Wilkins shares, just point of clarification, it's a Toki High School for Cory Abel. It's still the provisional intern that you're, internship that you're approving, but it's going to be a Krista McCullough. It's not a Toki, so just point of clarification on that.
That's the OAI two.
Yeah, that was the provisional intern.
Thank you.
President Dr. Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young, a couple things. Reporting document for sixth grade, I, I know we've talked about this before. I love the idea of the sixth grader is going to kind of the report card that they're going to start getting in seventh grade. My concern as a middle school teacher, middle school science teacher like Ms. Alexander, is that are they really going to be able, with the focus on math and ELA, honestly teach science and social studies? Because it's been my experience that these kids come into middle school with little to no science. So I, I'm hoping that this changes our focus in these grades so that they actually get the full on, the full curriculum. Because the pressure with test scores, things like that, they're not in elementary. And I'm just wondering how that's going to be pulled off. I would love to be part of any discussions with sixth grade teachers to see how they're going to actually incorporate those subjects that they typically don't teach into the curriculum. The other one is the report supporting every learner from Mrs. Lenderman, and I want to commend. Mrs. Lenderman, these are questions that LEA has been asking of the district and the board for years. We, LEA wants to cooperate in any way we can because we would like to get some of this information as well so that we can make sure that our most vulnerable students, our special ed students, get the education that they deserve. And the district needs to provide to them. So I really wanted to commend Mrs. Lenderman for putting that together and putting it out and getting it to the board and looking forward to seeing what the response is from the district. And again, LEA wants to participate in any way we can to help this. If you want to have meetings with teachers, I'm more than happy to make arrangements to make that happen. Thank you.
This is my first time here. I am a parent. My son is in the special education department. Last week, I mean, last month.
Can you name, please?
My son, his name is Luke Song.
No, your, your name.
My name is May, May Lee Tao.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, May Lee Song. But, yes, last month, I was watching on YouTube on, on YOGAS's live stream. I would love to be part of any discussions with sixth grade teachers to see how they're going to actually incorporate those subjects that they typically don't teach into the curriculum. The other one is the report supporting every learner from Mrs. Lenderman, and I want to commend. Mrs. Lenderman, these are questions that LEA has been asking of the district and the board for years. We, LEA wants to cooperate in any way we can because we would like to get some of this information as well so that we can make sure that our most vulnerable students, our special ed students, get the education that they deserve. And the district needs to provide to them. So I really wanted to commend Mrs. Lenderman for putting that together and putting it out and getting it to the board and looking forward to seeing what the response is from the district. And again, LEA wants to participate in any way we can to help this. If you want to have meetings with teachers, I'm more than happy to make arrangements to make that happen. Thank you.
This is my first time here. I am a parent. My son is in the Special Education Department. Last week, I mean, last month.
Can you name, please?
My son, his name is Luke Song.
No, your, your name.
My name is May, May Li Tao.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, May Li Song. But, yes, last month I was watching on YouTube on, on your guys' live stream about the Special Education Department and I saw that you guys have it on your agenda again. And I wanted to see what's the updates and reports because this does affect my family and my son. And with the substitutes and the students and the teacher, not the student not having teachers in the classroom, that is something that not only me, but a lot of my parents that I know that do have kids in special education that they always worry about. So I'm just here for the update and I saw that you guys have it on the agenda, but I don't know what it is. I'm just wondering about it.
Thank you.
Good evening, board, superintendents. My name is Rebecca Bratcher. I'm one of your special ed teachers. And we are so excited that you guys want to look at the department, look at what's going on in special ed because a lot of us have noticed that there are issues that need to be solved and aren't going to be solved. When we got the MOU last spring, we were kind of offended and we kind of had a rebuttal to it. And you guys said you didn't want to discuss it. But going ahead and seeing this report that you guys want to do is actually really exciting for us because there are so many issues like class size numbers, are classrooms without an actual teacher in them. Having enough time to actually do the reports that I have to do as a special ed teacher, I'm not only just teaching in my classroom, but I'm also holding meetings after school. I'm having to write reports that are beyond my contract time in order to be legally bound. We are one of your most legally bound employees within the district. And we would love to see how this reported turns out. We also want to be very open about what's going on in our positions. Thank you for wanting to see that report.
Hi, Aunt Frances Garcia, community member. She mentioned meetings after school past contract time. I was speaking to a teacher that is a special ed teacher for Stocktonified. And I said, so what days do you hold your meetings after school? She goes, I don't hold any meetings after school. It's after my contract time. We say no, we refuse. We hold all our meetings during the day. They get subs so that the teachers are working during their contract time. So I highly recommend that we look at that because they're special education teachers. They're meeting so many kids' needs and then they're staying many hours after. What can we do to help them do their work within their contract time?
Signal more. We are moving on to reports. Proposition 28, annual report, Dr. Horton.
Yes, I would like to invite Mr. Dawson to the microphone as he gets set up. This is an annual required report for Proposition 28, and Mark will walk us through that.
Good evening, President Dr. Ball, members of the board, Superintendent Young. The legislation requires an annual report that outlines the number of full-time equivalent teachers, classified staff, along with the number of students and the number of schools. If you go to the next slide, you'll see lifted straight from the legislation. And then the next slide will show that for 23, 20, oh, sorry, for 24, 25, we're able to hire 7.81 full-time equivalent teachers, serve 29,429 students across 47 schools.
Any comments from the board?
I have a few extra questions from my original email on just trying to get support so that we can fully utilize all of the funds. Because I think we can all agree that arts for all children is a wonderful, wonderful thing. But I think that's all I have. So you do have the question, how we can support that.
Did you want to elaborate on your questions you asked?
Just how can, how can we as a board support?
I see.
Making, making sure that we can fully utilize Prop 28 funds. And I know there's that 80% that has to go to staffing and 20% that can only go to materials and a lot of challenges.
Yeah, and I think that's the biggest challenge, finding the qualified teachers in the arts. We anticipate in the coming years, anybody who's at the university level who has thought about wanting to be a teacher in the arts, either visual or performing, will know now that Prop 28 is, is the law, so that funding will be there, so they will go in that direction. Our, our schools continue to be creative in how they build our programs and find teachers. But the teachers to fulfill that 80% just aren't available at this point. We were able to submit a waiver request for 23, 24 that was accepted that waived the requirement for the 80%, so the 80% could be used on materials. As a result, a lot of schools have seen improvements in their VAPA programs for materials. We're getting ready to submit the waiver for 24, 25. And if once approved, again, we won't be held to that 80% for the 24, 25 school year. So that carryover can be spent on materials. And we continue to recruit. We continue to look for qualified VAPA teachers. They're just not there.
Thank you.
In a perfect world, Mr. Dawson, what would be the optimum number you could see? Because when I see a point eight one, in my mind, I'm seeing teachers all over everywhere.
And I think that's really what we have. The high, the high schools, for example, with, I know, I think three, if not all four of our high schools have been able to hire a person to provide supplemental instruction in the arts. They've also been able to offer additional periods to provide the need. Speaking from my own experience at McNair, we had a really good graphic design teacher and he was usually willing to teach an extra period. This now allows them to do that because we're supplementing. I believe the funding is available for 35 to 40 teachers. Funding does allow those teachers to be split between sites, but again, finding those, again, finding those folks is, is a challenge. In a perfect world, we would find 35 to 40 VAPA teachers to work between our 47 schools, both at, both elementary and high school, elementary and secondary to be able to provide that instruction and supplement the existing programs.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Signal. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you.
Reporting document for sixth grade, Dr. Horton.
Yes, I would invite Susan Peterson, Director of Educational Services, to the microphone. She has some special guests that she'll introduce in a moment. As they get set up, I just want to point out that this is a, a report, a concept that came to the Curriculum Council earlier this spring. It was a very exciting report and met with great enthusiasm. Not to speak for those that are in the Curriculum Council, but it was very well received. And another big piece of this too that was, I think, on everyone's mind was the connection to college career. Seeing our sixth grade students have the opportunity to understand what a report card is on an A, B, C, D, F scale is a big piece of the preparation to have them ready for middle grades and also for that transition to grades nine and 10. So that was a very exciting thing for our middle grade teachers and our high school teachers to see that we're going to have conversations with students and parents early so for them to understand how important it is to be prepared, hit the ground running in middle grades and so forth. So there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of great things that have been done by the sixth grade committee. But those were two of the exciting pieces I wanted to share with the board before they get started was the Curriculum Council piece and college career readiness.
Well, thank you, Dr. Horton. Good evening, everyone. Happy summer. So again, my name is Susan Peterson and I have the privilege of serving as the Director of Education. So President Dr. Ball, members of the board, Mr. Young, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening on behalf of the sixth grade report card committee. We are here to provide an update on the recent revisions to the sixth grade report card, changes that we believe are critical in better supporting our students as they transition from elementary to secondary education. Joining me tonight are several valued colleagues who played an integral role in this work. I'd like to introduce to you the one and only Eva Martinez, our English Learner Coordinator, the very special Terry Dix, who is our instructional coach with, in our professional development department. And behind me, who will be coming up to the podium in a little bit, is Melanie Martinez. She's an amazing sixth grade teacher. She actually taught my children, so she's very valuable to me and very valued educator. We also have Jody Leonardo, who is a sixth grade teacher at Westwood. Together, we will share with you the rationale behind these changes, the collaborative process our committee undertook, and how this initiative aligns with our broader goals for student success across middle and high school. So next slide for us. Thank you. To begin, I'd like to recognize the dedicated educators and leaders who meet up the sixth grade report card committee. The selection process began with an open invitation. Every sixth grade teacher in Lodi Unified School District was invited to attend an informational meeting. At that meeting, we shared the scope of work, the expectations and the timelines for the project. From there, those who felt compelled and committed to the work volunteered to join the committee. The individuals you see up there on the slide tonight not only joined, but stayed engaged through every step of the process, from our first meeting to the final draft. Their dedication throughout, their, excuse me, their dedication, thoughtful input and collaboration were essential to the outcome we'll be sharing tonight. Importantly, the committee represents a balanced cross-section of our district with educators from North Stockton and Lodi areas. This diverse perspective helped ensure the needs and the experience of all of our sixth grade students were reflected. In addition, we were fortunate to have the support from Terry Dix, our instructional coach, and Eva Martinez, who serves as our English Learner Coordinator, both of whom added important instructional and equity-focused perspectives. Each of these individuals brought passion, professionalism, and assured commitment to improving how we report student learning. I'm truly grateful for their time and expertise and unwavering dedication throughout this process. So right now, I'd like to pass the microphone over to Eva and she will share with you our leadership's philosophy around the reporting document.
Good evening. As the leadership began laying the foundation for this work, we turned to key state adopted documents to guide our thinking and ensure alignment with current standards and instructional best practices. We use the California English Language Arts and English Language Development, math, history, social science, and science frameworks, along with the next generation of science standards as our primary resources. These frameworks help shape our philosophy around what a sixth grade report card should communicate. It should clearly reflect the essential standards students are expected to master, emphasize academic progress over time, and support a smooth transition from elementary to secondary expectations. With that in mind, the committee's task was to revise the sixth grade report card. One, to reflect student progress towards the California Common Core State Standards, ensuring families have a clear understanding of where their child stands in relation to the expected standards. To align with the grading systems used in middle and high school, creating a consistent experience as students move through our system. Third, to begin acclimating students to secondary grading policies and procedures, setting them up for a smooth and informed transition into middle school. Next, Terry Dix will review the committee process with you. Thank you. The developmental process spanned a full year, ensuring careful planning, inclusive input, and a strong foundation for implementation. We started in May 2024 with an informal meeting for all sixth grade teachers across, informational meeting, excuse me, for all sixth grade teachers across the district. In July, the committee held its first work session where we reviewed guiding resources and frameworks. By September, we had developed a clear purpose statement to guide our work. In November, the committee made key decisions about the structure of the report card, set timelines, and planned for the trainings coming up. January 2025, we marked the beginning of the planning of our sixth grade trainings for teachers, for sixth grade teachers, and a collaborative work that would appear on the report card. In March, we finalized the training materials to ensure consistency and clarity. By April, we communicated with site administrators and staff, providing them with details about the upcoming changes and open registration for the training sessions. Finally, in May 2025, we rolled out professional development for all sixth grade teachers, offering flexibility through both pull-out options and after-school options. This structured and inclusive timeline allowed us to build capacity across the district while keeping student learning and teacher support at the center of the process. Melanie Martinez will now share more about the purpose of reporting documents.
Good evening. As the committee began shaping the new report card, one of our first and most important tasks was defining its purpose. To support this work, we read and discussed On Your Mark by Thomas Guskewski, a well-regarded expert in grading and assessment. His book challenged us to think critically about traditional grading systems and encouraged us to focus on what truly supports student learning. After rich discussion and reflection, the team developed the purpose statement you see here. It emphasizes clarity, transparency, and alignment to standards, all essential in communicating student progress meaningfully. We felt so strongly about the opening line of this statement that we decided it should appear directly on the report card itself. It communicates to families, educators, and students why this document exists and what it is designed to do. Our committee believed this resource helped build capacity around the philosophy and the intent behind this important shift. And Jody Leonardo will now discuss our final decisions.
Okay, so this slide displays our, a sample of our new sixth grade report card, the final product of the committee's year-long work. One of the most impactful updates is the integration with our student information system, Ares. Using Ares standardized grade book, teachers will enter assignments and assessments just as they normally do. But now those grades will populate directly into the report card. This ensures consistency, accuracy, and efficiency in how grades are recorded and reported across the district. Just as importantly, this report card reflects a philosophical shift. We are moving away from the previous rubric-style profile scoring, which often varied in interpretation, and moving toward a traditional letter grade system that aligns with middle and high school practices. This shift is intentional. It helps students and families better understand academic progress using a familiar format. And it supports a smoother transition into secondary school's expectations. This alignment ensures that sixth grade serves as a true bridge between elementary and middle school, both in academic expectations and grading clarity. I welcome Terry back as she reviews implementation and professional development support.
Communication and collaboration have been key throughout this process, and we've engaged a variety of groups to ensure a smooth rollout. In February, March 2025, we shared an overview of the project with principals at their meeting to keep leadership informed. In April 2025, the Curriculum Council received updates and we also communicated the changes to seventh grade teachers to prepare them for incoming students. In May, we marked the beginning of our comprehensive training for sixth grade teachers, which include, which continues to build their familiarity and comfort with the new report card. We followed up again with Curriculum Council in June to provide progress, a progress update and gather feedback. Tonight, we present the finalized report card and related plans formally to the board. Additionally, ongoing teacher and admin training, administration training will be provided during the LT3 Learn Together Teach Together and throughout the year. This staggered communication plan ensures that all stakeholders, from classroom teacher to administrators, are well-prepared and engaged as we implement this important change. Looking ahead, we have a comprehensive plan to continue supporting teachers as they implement the new report card. Starting in July, the, as I mentioned, during the Learn Together Teach Together sessions, we'll provide a targeted training for new teachers as well as those that are new to sixth grade and teachers who have COMBOS 5-6. At the same time, advanced training sessions will be available for teachers who have already completed the initial training but may have questions or want a deeper understanding of the process. To assist with family communications, we'll distribute slides to all sixth grade teachers between July and August. These will be incorporated into their back-to-school night presentations to help parents and guardians understand the new report card format. Additionally, elementary PE and music teachers will receive specialized training. Additionally, elementary P.E. and music teachers will receive specialized training, and a committee of mild-mod SDC teachers will be convened to develop a clear guidance for their unique reporting needs. In October, we'll send out a screencastified tutorial explaining the report card process and offer office hours for personalized teacher support. We'll also provide additional support to help teachers prepare for parent conferences. This ongoing professional development and communication plan will help ensure a smooth transition and effective use of the new reporting system throughout the year. You may be interested in how we're going to roll this out to parents. Eva's going to take us into that part. So to begin, supporting our families is a vital part of this transition, and we've developed a clear plan to keep parents and guardians informed and engaged. Information will be provided in multiple languages as needed. Also, information will be disseminated at different meeting platforms such as DILAC, which is our district English Language Advisory Council, coffee talks, and parent club. At back-to-school night, sixth-grade teachers will share information about how to access the Ares gradebook and use Parent Access, empowering families to track their students' progress in real time. They will also explain the grading changes, helping parents understand the new report card structure and what it means for their child. During parent conferences, teachers will be equipped with talking points that focus on key areas. One, helping parents understand the grade point average and what it reflects about their child's academic performance. Secondly, encouraging families to regularly review their students' work to stay connected to their learning journey. And lastly, clarifying how the grading and recording systems aligns with what students will experience in middle school, helping families prepare for that transition. And just a side note, one of our DILAC meetings this past year, I had a parent ask about her concern, what's going to happen to me as a parent when I go to middle school? I know my teacher, I can go to the teacher every day if I have questions, but middle school, there's seven teachers. Who do I go to? And it was interesting, so I asked her, so what grade your child in? Your child was in second grade. Well, we got some time there, but what rose from that was our parents want to know what's going on, but the platform maybe may be something that they're fearing because they may not be technologically savvy, or knowing that that's even there as an access, and how can they communicate with their teachers via that platform? So having something like this in a sixth-grade classroom where they know that one teacher and they're getting help and support and knowing how to access Ares portal, I think will be a huge success and a win for them. So when their child lives to seventh grade, they'll know how to communicate with their teachers via that platform. So by providing clear and consistent communication and resources, we aim to foster strong partnerships between families and schools that support student success.
All right, and so our next district staff will be bringing forward recommended updates to board policy and an administrative rule 5121. These updates are necessary to align our official policies with the new grading and reporting practices for sixth grade that we've discussed. We anticipate that this will provide clear guidance and consistency across the districts, supporting the smooth implementation and sustainability of this implementation. We look forward to collaborating with the board with these revisions as we bring them forward. And thank you very much, President Dr. Ball and members of the board and Mr. Young, for the opportunity to present the work that we've been working on, and we're really excited about the new, our new endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was excellent. It was mesmerizing.
Mesmerizing.
I have a board comment.
First and foremost, as a former middle school teacher, this is about 29 years too late because as a seventh-grade teacher, struggling, struggling, I'm so excited and I want to thank you for your work in doing this. I'm curious, when you're talking about the training, who is going to be providing the training? Will it be committee members?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. And I'm going to actually ask Teri Dix, who's been very, very pivotal with that exact topic. So Teri, can you answer that for us?
Yes, absolutely. So our, our committee members signed up. We trained together. We wrote the presentation together, and then that was provided. So it was peer-to-peer, and it was, I thought it was very effective, and a lot of great questions came up, and we were able to give some teachers even space and time to try to figure it out in their head because as you know, whenever something changes, it takes time. And so it was, it was a very positive experience. The groups were relatively small, and so there was a lot of time to talk and think about what's going, how these changes are going to affect their classroom, what and how they grade is select to them, or just giving them a platform in which to report. And since there won't be enough for one at every site, it would be nice to have maybe an assigned person that they could lean on for that because this is, I'm excited. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Wonderful report card for sixth graders. Just a couple of questions. Do you have rubrics for all the grading?
Well, that's a great question. And what we're presenting tonight is just the changes of the report card itself. But part of the discussion that we want to continue are the grading practices, which our high schools have been started with the MSLP process. And our sixth-grade teachers have been very supportive with the idea of how we could standardize this, excuse me, I'm having a hard time, and standardize it across the, at least the site and hopefully bring it across to the, to the district. But right now, we're just really working about implementing a new platform for, you know, standardizing using Ares as a gradebook and using a report card that reflects what we see in the middle and high schools. That's all we're really, where we are now, it's slow and steady, but that conversation has started, yes.
Then you're going to get into the weight of each assignment?
We're not, we're, we have standardized some, some of that. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, Teri, or maybe we want some teachers to talk about? Melanie, why don't you come up and talk about that, that part?
That was a good question for you. We did, I think what Susan was starting to say is that we did standardized categories within the Ares gradebook. I mean, full disclosure, I was shocked in one of the early meetings that not every, it's not even uniform that teachers use Ares. We, I, we've been using it and almost, I mean, my colleagues and the people that I talk to about grading on a regular basis have been using it. So I was, that was a big shock for me that Ares is not even used across the board. So I think that this is fantastic in that and that everybody, all the sixth-grade teachers will be using Ares, just even that that is a policy that everybody, everybody will be doing. And then, like I said, there are some standardized weights for categories within Ares, but it still gives autonomy to the teacher that not everybody is going to be doing X assignment on X day and grading that the same way, if that makes sense.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this, so you have a sixth grader at one school, a sixth grader at another school, and they're getting a B in one class, and that same student could be getting a C in another class at another school, but doing the same work.
That is, that was our thought behind having the categories weighted the same.
Yeah, the categories weighted the same, but you just said that they have a leeway and...
Well, for example, I don't remember off the top of our head. Let's say that assessments are 50%. I think that we put them at 60, honestly, and which was lower than a lot of the secondary. So with assessments being worth that weight of 60%, if Jody is teaching something, she might have a, at the end of a novel, she might do a one-pager, which is very common that they would do, and that might be an assessment that she does. Maybe I'm doing an essay, and they're, at the end of the novel, they're writing and comparing, you know, character development from the beginning of the story to the end. So the assessments will still be weighted the same, but there is still that autonomy that we don't have to be at different sites doing the exact same assignments all the time.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking upon my high school experience that I teach, say, honors AP, it honors biology. Honors biology at Lodi, honors biology at OK. Are we aligned in terms of rubrics, grading, weight of assignments, and so forth? The answer is no. So all you're running into, I mean, all I'm bringing up tonight is a problem that exists at the high school in seventh and eighth-grade level. It's going to filter into you as well. And it's one of the things that needs to be done with more collaboration amongst teachers, both vertically and horizontally, and I think you're in the right way for that because we want all kids to be graded fairly and, you know, for all the work that they do. I think it's a great step, and I really applaud you for all the hard work that you're doing. It's a tough road because you might have certain teachers that are strong in certain areas and then weaken others in, in sixth grade, and it's difficult. I get that, and I was just curious how you were going to try to manage something that is a huge problem at the high school and seventh and eighth-grade level. So I applaud you for being open about it, transparent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just have a question. What was the response of the sixth-grade teachers?
In the two trainings that I provided, they're very excited, very excited. They are saying this should have been done years ago. The parents, because they knew I had taken many sub-days to attend the meetings and to train the other sixth-grade teachers, and they want to know why I'm out, and I tell them, well, because we're going to be doing this, and their parents are excited. They're like, wow, this is great, because they, they look in Ares and they're like, well, you know, this isn't reflective of the grade, and it just doesn't jive, and they want, they're ready. They want to be looking in Ares, so they're excited, and the, my colleagues, teachers.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
It's going to be a great experience for all those teachers to have the same, you know, philosophy, not philosophy because everybody has a different one, but the same grading systems.
And I will also say that our fifth and some of our fourth-grade teachers are saying, wow, when do we get to do that? So that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, because they have no experience prior to that.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point, that fourth graders and fifth graders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a real quick comment, just thanks, you know, for all the work that you put into this because I know it's not easy, and good luck with the work ahead of you because it's not over yet.
No.
Got the outline there, now you got to fill it in, so.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
We'll keep you posted on our progress. Thank you very much tonight for your time.
We have a comment from Ms. Martinez.
Oh, Ms. Martinez, I'm sorry.
I had sent a few questions to, some of them are still unanswered after listening to the presentation. Just on, were you able to, you know, even though these are volunteer committee members, were you able to incorporate feedback from your RSP, your arts, and your parents and students that that way there is inclusion with these individuals, even though they're not in your committee, but you have feedback?
I love that question, and I'm going to just, I'm going to ask Teri to answer it, but I want to talk about one part of your question you had about parents. Many of our committee members were parents too, so it was really, like Mrs. Martinez, her children are just in this exact spot, so it was really so fresh to get that perspective, even though parents weren't necessarily invited to be participated on the, on the committee. But Teri, can you answer her question about, we, we were pretty inclusive, and we have a great plan for our SDC programs too, our teachers, excuse me.
So I, I love, I love that input. Specifically, we, from this, from going, moving forward, I think it would be a great idea to elicit some input from students. We did not get that specific yet. We are going to, we have our SDC for self-contained mild-mod use the same report card now as the sixth-grade teachers and the elementary teachers. So when they came to the training, they had a lot of great points, and so we took their feedback, and we have forming this new committee so we make sure that we can have some consistency for, for those specific students across the district because that's really important. With a parent input like Susan had said, really came from the members of our committee. Many of us have gone through it. I've gone through it with my students. So my children are older now. We had some current parents that we're talking about, so we kind of had the historical perspective as well as what's happening right now in the classroom. One of the first things, and this goes back to Mr. Porter's comment as well, that the sixth-grade teachers came, came to us with was, well, we want to do the same thing middle school's doing, so can you tell us? Unfortunately, we don't have that consistency across the district yet. That's where we're moving. This is kind of, sixth grade's the middle of our K6, TK6 preschools, 12 classrooms, and so it's like, what we're hoping is that the pebble drops and we get the ripple effect, and this, this is something that we've started here, and it's going to take some time, but it's something that's going to progress across our district and help all of our students have a more consistent grading policy across the district.
So just confirm, this is going to be implemented starting the 25, 26 school year? We do not have SDC feedback. We have not tri-stormed this or had any communication to parents up to this date?
Well, the, the SDC one, we, we did get the feedback as the teachers that came to the training, so that's why there, we have a self, self-committee for them to be able to create reporting documents that meets their needs. As for parents, they have, the first time they'll be informed is when we have the back-to-school and the parent-teacher conferences. That's why we're, we're creating a template for our teachers so that they can support and inform our parents. The other places are that now is the time, because we're starting it, we do want parent feedback. So when we have our parent coffees, when we have DILAC meetings on the school sites, when we have district parent meetings, we want to be able to solicit feedback from the families to help them give us feedback. How's it going? Because it's, it's an ongoing process. There's not going to be, this is the one and done. We're going to move forward. We need to get their feedback. I think this will be another opportunity to communicate with our students. How's it going? What, do you like your parents knowing what your grades are on Ares? You know, what's the feedback for them? Because they also, when I am working with middle school students, they go on Ares themselves so they can see what's, what's happening. So even empowering students to be an advocate for themselves in education, to see that they are also either progressing or not progressing, what areas they have to work on. But the parent and the student is where we're going to start now. We are going to begin that, that journey and get the feedback from them and then reevaluate because we are pushing this new.
Yeah, this is not just an over, we're not over, you know, we're, we're just beginning. And it will, implementation work takes many, many years. So it's just the beginning stages of a very long and probably a little messy process. And so we're really thankful that this, this group of, of teachers have committed to their whole life now to this report card committee.
So looking at, since this policy is going to change and be presented at the next board meeting, why didn't you guys send a communications or use change management for parents ahead of time?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we think about with that would be, if this were going to something that for many of our parents would be incredibly unfamiliar, that might be an issue. But for parents that have been educated in the United States at middle school or high school, A, B, C, D, F is something that they likely already understand. So we're putting something in place that for them would probably be much more familiar than a 1, 2, 3, 4 scale that happens in grades TK through 5. So I don't think we have a steep a mountain to climb, in other words, as we may do if we were instituting a change that were perhaps a bit more dramatic.
I think changes in very large districts like ourselves can be challenging with the number of individuals that there are, and I think that it is a detriment to families to not give information or create a disparity in equity when we don't communicate for those individuals who are not from our U.S. public system. And so it would be really great if we could get a, a communication out to parents coming on what's coming ahead of this, I guess, back-to-school night, before your coffee chats, because the policy will have already changed. And at that point, what is, what are you really gaining in feedback? Because I don't know what policy impact that those parents would actually have or, or even looking at, you are solidifying all of this, and SDC teachers are still without guidance. Is that a concern because we're implementing this without having it fully fleshed out and ready to go for all areas?
Are you suggesting that they contact parents before the school starts?
At least have some information, and start working on change management and having awareness, providing... and having awareness, providing awareness, giving knowledge, you know, providing that desire, making sure that as we come into 25, 26, as we change policies, that because this is a completely teacher-led committee and yes, they have multiples, just like I have multiple roles, it's, it still doesn't take from the fact that there are many parents with different situations, that many may not be from the US system.
Well, I went to school in India and we had A, B, C starting grade one. Just so you all know, it's not, this is not a new system to anybody. You dreaded the B coming in and you dreaded the C coming in because in India there's no that. I'm just saying, this is not a new thing that'll come up, but I appreciate some input and what you said.
If I could, one of the pieces that hadn't happened was bringing it before the representatives of the community, the board, and making sure the board was aware of this. And with the beginning of the school year happening so soon and knowing that there are transfers where teachers were in one position last year and another, the timing is perfect at the start of the school year. The policy needs to change as well prior to getting information out for accuracy's sake. So certainly, we don't want to disregard parents because they are partners in this, but the timing of the beginning of the year, back to school night is such an important time for teachers to kind of lay that foundation. And it does provide that avenue to bring parents on board and even teach them how to download areas on a phone and track it. And I guarantee your sixth grader is gonna be tracking it daily and coming to the teachers and saying, why didn't you put my grade in yet? Because they will be paying attention to it. So to your point, absolutely, parents need to be brought up to speed and partners in this. But the board being informed in this report was a critical first step and the policy changes come thereafter. And then the parents will be brought on board with that information. So that would be the managed, change management does need to start with keeping the board in the loop before it moves out to the community. We wouldn't want to get out of front of the board on that.
Well, thank you. This was a really detailed report and I'm excited, just like I know all other board members and cabinet is, and really appreciate your time. I know this is more time than we can imagine that you put in. So thank you. Thank you so much. We're moving on to our next report, which is the bond program update report, Ms. Lederman.
Good evening, Dr. Ball, President, Dr. Ball, Members of Board, and Superintendent Young. So I am pleased tonight to present to you an update on the district's bonds programs. Next slide, Michael. So for over 20 years, our community has supported major investments in our schools, helping us build classrooms, improve facilities, enhance safety, and create engaging learning environments. So looking back, we've had three bonds. The first one, that Measure K in 2002 and Measure L in 2026 and Measure U in 2016. To date, under these bond programs, the board has delivered over $350 million in project commitments while also providing transparency on each bond program. These efforts have made lasting impact that will benefit our students and our communities for years to come. Next slide. So Measure L was our school facilities, oh, get that out right here, improvement district SFID bond, meaning that that was a specific boundary within our district. And so that was our North Stockton schools. And thanks to Measure L, many schools in North Stockton have benefited from critical safety and security upgrades, including projects such as fire alarm system replacement, bell and intercom system upgrade, parking lot improvements to help that flow, just to name a few. Currently, our Measure L has approximately around nine million left in available funds, which are currently allocated to three active projects. One at Ronald McNair Pumping's pump station, storm pump station, fire alarm system replacements at both Marada and Plaza. And then seeing where we end up after those two projects, our hope is to be able to also, through our other Elkhorn Measure U project, to connect Elkhorn sewer to the city line, get away from that Leachville. So additionally, in Measure L, there is 45 million in authorized but unissued bonds and that is currently earmarked for our Westlake property there in North Stockton for a site development. Next slide. So Measure U is currently our most active bond program, which you can see this summer. Many of those projects currently underway. All of those projects align with our facilities master plan. And to help track the progress, we reviewed and categorized every Measure U project item by site, marking each as completed, in progress, or planned for the future. So this allowed us to create a matrix to report to the board our progress on completing these projects under Measure U. So as of right now, 92% of all the site projects under Measure U are either completed or in active design, ready to begin construction. And the two largest of those projects being the Lodi Middle School New Classroom NPR Modernization Project and the Elkhorn New Classrooms and Modernization. So looking ahead towards the future, once our current list of active projects are complete, we have a very small number of Measure U projects left under that bond. And at the conclusion of Measure U, this board will have replaced 72 portables with modular-built buildings. Next slide. So the big question now is really what comes next? What should I and our team be planning for, for the future? As you know, a project that is in construction this summer really started planning three or more years ago. We have the board-approved Long Range Facilities Plan, which really gives us that big picture of what our schools need and want. It's a thoughtful, it's also ambitious, with a total estimated cost of over $2 billion. On top of that, we are seeing steady development in west, the west side of Lodi, the south side of Lodi, and in northwest and northeast parts of Stockton. And before we really get to answering that question, I want to talk a minute about the state's Proposition Two. Because I'm sure you're gonna ask, well, didn't the state pass that proposition too? Well, that's kind of a mixed bag of blessing because modernization funds, about $5.2 billion, they're already allocated. Already allocated. There's no money left under modernization should we submit any new projects. There is some good news. There is still funding under the new construction portion of that bond and also the CTE. And Julie's mind is already going with some new projects that we've started talking about. So hopefully we'll have some to bring forward to the board for consideration under CTE and Proposition Two. But, so with all of that in mind, the key question to the board is, is there interest in reaching out to the community to talk about the possibility of a future bond measure and investments, and our future investments in our schools? If the answer is yes, then we also have some other potential questions. Let me get to the right page. What kind of projects would our community be interested in? And also, most importantly, would the voters support future school improvements through a new school bond? So my team and I are ready to support the process, whatever direction the board wants us to take. And I look forward to hearing your thoughts and answering any questions.
Thank you. I am opening it to the board for comments.
I think it's very necessary to go through a bond issue again. I know the one we had, the previous one was like 289 million or so. And we worked hard on it. Some of the board members worked hard, some of the staff, people here, the cabinet worked hard to pass this and we were supported by a lot of people and it's really a tedious job to get a measure passed. So I am for it in order to get these things and we need that.
Yes, the last time this came before us, I was against it. I didn't agree or like the preliminary work that was done by the team. I felt that they had surveyed or took a slice of the pie from the wrong demographics. It would be attached to taxes and things and so I didn't like the data that they brought us. I thought the data was not accurate. But I think when we're at post being completed, there's always something to be doing around the school and for our community. So I think we are in the right season for another bond. It just depends on how quickly you would like to move on that.
Thank you for your presentation. I guess I, I'm fiscally very conservative. My concerns revolve more around, there are a lot of unknowns right now. We don't know what's gonna happen with Title I. We don't know what's gonna happen with our special aid funding from the federal government. And for us to pursue, and those needs need to be filled, for us to pursue a bond, possibility there. So there's a lot of questions in my mind based on outside sources. Should we look at a bond? I think it would be a great idea to do that, just to get some feedback. I felt the last bond that was put together, or the information that was put together was done so very poorly. And I would, I want not to say no, I want to say yes. It's easy to say no. But I am worried a lot about what's coming down the pipe from Washington and how we're gonna backfill that as a district. Ms. Juarez is looking at me and shaking her head, yes. Because we do have a lot of kids with needs that we're gonna have to be able to take care of if that funding gets cut off. So am I in favor of looking at this? Yes. But I'd like to do it with a different company that had a little bit better feel for what they're doing and better in presentation too. And what they can do for us as a district. So that's kind of my opinion right there, which is kind of vague, I'm sorry, but best I can do.
Thanks for your work and I would like to look into a bond, but today's economy, things going on, it would be a rough one, but I think it's at least a good idea to look at it and feel for what's going on out there. Yes, thanks. Most of you for the work.
I'm all about information gathering, looking at it. I'm probably also very conservative fiscally with any of those being attached. I also am realistic in working at a school that needed so many repairs and the only reason they're getting it is because of a bond. Many of our schools are in that same array. So I'm definitely interested in looking at it, but we're definitely always leaning toward not having it, having it be the least financially burdensome to families in our district. Times are tough for a lot of families right now.
Definitely would like more information assessing the risks and looking at the projects and seeing how that impacts the equity between the different schools. And thank you for the presentation.
So it sounds like everybody on the board would like to know more about what this proposed bond can do. I have a quick question though. Do we have any data available as to, we hear about schools being overcrowded, Larson's overcrowded, it's double the size of what it should be. We need more schools. Is this bond that you're proposing can help us open more schools, more newer schools? I know we have Gantner coming, but that's again, a bond-supported school that's coming. We need one in West Lake side. We need one on northeast Stockton side. So all these schools, will they need bond support to open?
The bond could support new schools. It could support whatever projects the board puts in the bond language when that would eventually appear on a ballot. I think really right now, I want to make sure that what we're looking for, and I think I've heard it, is the direction to go out to our community and have those discussions with them and gather that feedback, gather that data. What type of projects would they be interested in? Would they be supportive of a bond? And yes, I do have my eye on a marketing firm that successfully worked in Twin Rivers and Elk Grove on their bond projects. So yes.
Okay, well, I think you're both looking forward to what you bring to us in terms of more information and a different company. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We have another report supporting Early Learner, a data-informed review of Florida-identified special education programs and services. Ms. Lederman?
Yes, so in the last couple meetings, we've heard from several families, teachers, parents. And I would like to propose, looking at a report that formally documents what is the current state of our district in special education, also considering the fact that there is funding changes that might happen. There might, there is different political items going on right now. And I think our best path forward for creating a strategic plan and evaluating where we need to go for special education is providing a detailed analysis. Also, maybe modifying how we do things today may not look like what it is today. So we only know what we know and if we don't look at best practices and we don't get information, we can't improve where we need to improve. And I think that this is a chance for us to redesign and reset expectations as well as improve our policy language, improve our procedures and processes so that there's better communication, better information for families, teachers, administrators. So yes, I proposed three pages for different items in the report that could be gathered.
Just for clarification from my side, who are we asking this report from?
So this would go to Superintendent Young and his staff to look into what types of reports that they could bring to us, different organizations that might be able to scope the work and then look into how they could provide these services.
I'll open it up to board comments.
First of all, from Ms. Lederman, this is an outstanding piece of literature you put together here. I actually think it should be done globally. Let's start with special aid. I love the idea of looking at compliance. I love the idea of the staffing level. I like more feedback. I love data and how we're doing. I think the idea is to see if we are on the right track. There's nothing wrong with looking at what we're doing and opening up the windows and see if you're doing something wrong. There's nothing wrong with that at all. So I think that as you dive into what you've written here, which is quite eloquent, it is well within our means to do this. And I would say we probably should do this across a lot of programs that we do within our school district. As we heard tonight, the report card for sixth grade. All these things that we're doing should be data-driven decision-making. And I think our school district, whatever the reason is, we don't look at too much of data decisions all the way up to who we give contracts to. So this, I think, is a great template and I think it's well-needed. I think these are children that are special and they're under attack by many, many people within the political scheme. And I think we need that within our district. So I like it. I like it a lot. And I really, really applaud you for what you put together here in this report. I'm sure it's well within the wheelhouse of Mr. Young to put it into works.
I think we have an expert on special aid.
I think we have an expert on special ed, and that's Mr. Paul Warren. I would like him to make some comments on that. Could you please, sir?
So, I mean, there are things, well, I mean, every year, Erinick and I, who is special ed director that works with me, I mean, we reflect every year, looking at things like the issues that we're facing, like staffing issues. So for years, we've been addressing those kinds of things because that is the most fundamental issue that we have in special ed. And if we don't have teachers in the classroom, and that's beyond something that we in special ed can control, and so we partnered with personnel, we discussed it in cabinet, we've been working for years trying to find ways to recruit and get more people to come to load I, to special ed, and fill positions. And I think to, to a good degree, we're seeing improvements and growth in that area. We do have less open positions than we've had in years past. We, we don't have all of them filled, which, you know, I mean, if there's anything that I am the most concerned about, it's about filling those classes. As far as other issues, compliance-related issues, one of the things that I don't think that people completely understand is that when it comes to the Department of Education, or the Office of Administrative Hearing, or the Office of Civil Rights, whenever there are compliance issues, it's district, we deal with them. But ultimately, the compliance goes back to the teacher. The concern I have with some of the things that are asked of in this report, not that I'm against doing, you know, an audit of special ed, and I'm all for, you know, looking into it and finding how we can do things better. But ultimately, compliance, the third floor, special ed facilities, compliance, but it has to happen in the classroom. It has to happen with teachers. So my concern with some of the things in here is that it could potentially require more of the teachers, and could become a negotiated item, or additional duties for teachers that already have other duties. Now, anyway, that being said, that is an issue, and it's an issue that we deal with on a monthly basis. When we see IEPs that are out of compliance, we address that with the teachers, we address that with the principals. But again, some of the things that are addressed in this request are not measurable with what we have, and we require more of the teachers to be able to measure that. There are a lot of compliance things that we could address, and that we could look at addressing better. If the board wanted to have some, you know, a group come in and evaluate, I'm all for that, to find better ways of doing it. Anyway, but I think we have a pretty good idea of the things that we have challenges with, and they're things that we deal with every single year. And, you know, and they're things that we're making growth on. One of the things that we have had concerns about is teachers, teacher curriculum. And Erin has done an amazing job of working with curriculum council and getting curriculum to all of our teachers. Because, because special education is so unique, and there's such a broad continuum of curricular needs, it's been very difficult for us to expect our teachers to just do the modifications on their own. So we've made an effort to get more curriculum that will help them to be able to differentiate the, the way they do instruction, to meet the needs of students, and also to, to help them in developing goals and being able to develop baselines. Because, you know, it's very challenging, especially if you're modifying a curriculum, or you're modifying grade-level curriculum and teaching kids, and then trying to find the best way to come up with appropriate, measurable, and observable goals. So, I mean, there are, there are things that we're trying to sequentially do, and we are self-reflecting on an annual basis. But if the board is of the opinion that we should have someone else come in and audit us, we welcome any input from outside people and stand ready to do whatever is needed to approve.
A question. Paul, there's different challenges at every school, different challenges in special ed. And can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, I mean, throughout our district, I mean, we have a variety of different types of programs. And even when we're looking at trying to get people, or, you know, recruit people, our most challenging classroom to recruit is for our structured autism class because it is our most difficult class, especially our elementary, because they're so young, their communication skills are emerging. Anyway, they're the most challenging group, and that is the majority of our open positions. But yeah, I mean, depending on a, a number of factors, the, the teachers that are there, the administrators that are there, the culture of the school, you know, they're very, you know, how, how special ed kids are integrated into the general education programs, that varies from site to site. That's something that we've tried to work with our administrators, you know, to, you know, to get our special education kids more integrated into the schools and working on the cultures of this more inclusively. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sure. I had several notes here, and I just, I'm going to kind of fire them out, if, if that's okay. Because as I was going through this, I feel in my heart of hearts that special ed concerns have been a priority at the boards whenever we come up with frustrations with it. And, and getting data, I'm a science person from that. So I'm all for that. But when I looked at the, the whole scope of this, it became very daunting to me. And I taught special ed for about four years. And if I were a brand-new teacher that came in and saw this, it would, it would scare me, number one. Because special ed is scary. And I had a question for you, Mr. Warren, and I'll miss seconds. However, you know, when I go back, we have, there's processes and fail safes for compliance issues set up by the state or SFAH and all of those. Parents have, I mean, rights that they can follow if they have complaints. Are we seeing in load I unified an increase in that?
An increase in complaints?
In complaints, or an increase, because I'm assuming, and maybe I'm wrong, please correct me. If we are out of compliance, wouldn't the state let us know?
Yes. So, if we're to look longitudinally at Office of Administrative Hearing complaints, CDE complaints, I mean, we're basically on par similar from year to year. I mean, this is not an extraordinary year, one or the other. Our district, from what's been shared with me with, you know, our attorneys who work with a variety of other districts, following distance learning, districts were just hammered because there was so much legal exposure. Because even though kids were put on remote learning, their, the district's FAP obligations were not absolved. And so, there were, we had much less lawsuits than other school districts following that event. We did make an effort to work with parents and say, hey, let's try to address these formally. How can we help support your kid and do this and that, to avoid, you know, attorneys getting involved and, you know, filings that get, you know, with the Office of Administrative Hearing, or CDE complaints, or CDE complaints without.
And one of my main concerns that you touched on is, and, and it was interesting to me to hear Ms. Wilkins speak about this, and I've heard from a couple of other LEA members. When I was reading through this, all I saw was the burden, extra burden it would put on special ed teachers to try and gather and to try and get this information. And although it says there's no financial or no fiscal impact, in my mind, are you just going to assume that teachers are going to go back? I'm a brand-new teacher, because gosh, I'm excited about coming to load I. And then you dropped this on my lap that says I have to go back and find the trend for three years, looking at where we've been with this. Again,
Point, point of clarification.
I see a teacher having an issue with this. Please let me finish this, and then you can address that. So that is a huge concern of mine. Extra burdens on any teacher, but extra burdens especially on special ed teachers who are already dealing with a significant number. I guess I have also questions about the, the staffing and the capacity of who's, who's going to gather all this? Everybody I know works so hard and is gearing up for a brand-new school year, and to look at this and think, how are you going to gather all this information? In science, you have short-term trending, which is a minimum of a year, up to fifteen to twenty years for a long-term trending. Where, and I sound like I'm, I'm just blowing this away, and I'm not, because I feel like there's pieces of this, but I think it is so this way, that we need to pick some of the most important focal points that we can easily access to start the process. When you go swimming, I know there are some parents that just throw their kids in the water, sink or swim. But I also learned over the years that it's, and pieces of information make things happen. Like, so what staff do I have stakeholders? Answer that, I guess, about compliance. I guess, Ms. Lenderman, I had a question for you in, in putting this together, which thank you, I mean, I can't imagine the time it took to put all this together. Who do you see as the pivotal person or people? And then, how do you expect them to not have a financial impact, to not have this be a cost issue?
I'm actually going to deflect all of your questions because Ms. Lenderman brought the report. I would like for you to kind of touch upon the questions that
Is that okay to ask, I should, or?
Yeah, absolutely. No, because the report's coming from Ms. Lenderman, so I'd like to know.
And it's okay. I'll clarify. The reason in a report, there is no funding expectation because at this point, this is a report,
Sure, sir. Okay.
The board collectively has to decide if it wants to move forward through consensus, and then it comes back for action to do such a deep analysis. Because then you have to determine, are you going to have, I mean, to have a department audit itself, I would certainly say as superintendent, that's challenging. If you have an outside group do it, that would come through an action to show you what a cost breakdown would be associated with that. So, it's not in the report, but if it were to come back at the board's will, then we would have to consider the cost.
So do you see an outside source maybe gathering this, or do you see more insight, I guess, would be?
So, potentially outside, outsourced. And my thought process was bring this to board as a collective whole, make a decision on whether we want to pursue this scoping. Now, obviously, this is just a, an idea of what could be included in a report, right? But you're right, infrastructure has to be built somewhere. We may not have the data today, but how can we make those steps to build infrastructure? We only know what we know. We may be from different roles. We may have different experiences. But there are organizations out there that are thinking futuristic. What if the model of today's education is much different? And what if we could innovate? What if we could look at our, our kids differently? What if we can see them mainstream in almost every area, even when it's challenging? So, look at our mild, moderate kids. You know, maybe SEC may look different. Maybe they may have a different model, a different proposal. Why does it have to look like what it is today? And bringing someone else might give us ideas of what could be. And maybe what could be is better than what we can think of as a collective.
So are you proposing that the board break forward the whole document in its entirety as a report, or are you wanting to pick parts of it as a board? That's something we have to decide. Is this coming back as a full scope of report for this, all of this, or is it parts of it that we want to?
I would, I would caution the board that if you're looking at an outside entity doing an audit, they would present the scope of work based on the interest. They, you know, how this is set up in this report, they may be able to provide the scope of work that they would do and the feedback you could get. That could be revised based on the needs and interests of the collective board to analyze and provide feedback, if that's the direction you want to go. But to say that outside entities say, okay, this is what we're going to do, without providing the scope of work that they do already to provide input. So I would just caution, I, I don't know if you could do exactly as it's written, if you're using an outside group to audit, so to speak. Because that, that's really the baseline of what we're looking at here. An analysis is an audit of what we do in consideration of what we might do differently, if you will.
Any other board comments?
I have some. Sure. Oh, so many comments. Let's start with, the following request goes concerns community members, stakeholder, internal observations regarding potential lapses in mandatory service delivery, increasing litigation, and systemic inefficiencies. Some of those components make me incredibly nervous because it's closed session items. So if we're going to say this is the reason for the report, we're getting into a Brown Act violation. I'm not saying we have, or we are. I'm saying, if you're going to talk about increasing litigation, how do we have that knowledge? Those things happen behind those doors. So, let me finish. So that makes me nervous. And that's where my red flag goes up and goes, okay, now I've got to really, really hone in. I love the idea of taking a deep look. Love it. I'm all in. What we know to be true is the state and federal government are running special ed the way they choose to run it. We are admittedly a pawn in their ability to navigate within our district. So instead of throwing money into things that don't work, let's figure out how to beat the system. The system is in place. We all know what the rules are. We all know what the mandates are. Nobody is excelling at special ed. Nobody can hire enough people. We can't service our kids week after week, month after month. We hear parents there. We all go home feeling sick to our stomachs. We know we are not doing every student to the level, giving them the services they deserve. Nobody on this board will say we are killing it in our services. And that's no teacher's response. That's not their fault. That's not our district. That's not the board's. This is the, this is the situation that we are in. How do we do better? And I think that is where, what this is born of. And I totally agree with you. So can we get a think tank together of teachers, parents, whoever it is, figure out how to beat the system? How do we do better for our students and better for our district? I'm telling you, I sit at those California school boards, I am the delegate in Oregon, California, one of them. Nobody has an answer. Everybody is screaming. They said, what is the one thing we can take back in lobby? Every single time it's special ed, and they say, that's off the table, they're going to do what they're going to do. Well, they're going to do what they're going to do. Meanwhile, our students, our parents, and our special ed teachers, parents, everybody in the classroom would be dying on the line. We're not immune to that. We know it. We apologize for it. We have to figure out how to beat the system. So I think instead of taking apart our system and analyzing every component of it, we need to dive deep into how do we fix it. And how do we fix it might be understanding the problem. So number one is put a qualified, credentialed special ed teacher in every classroom. Give them the proper assistance and the tools to do the job. The federal government, the state government are not helping us with that. They can't qualify and graduate enough credentialed special ed teachers. We know that. Some of us sitting here have dealt with it firsthand. So how do we fix it? And I think that's the task that I see, is the state's not coming to help us. They're, they're not. So how do we, what do we do? How do we fix it? How can we get outside the box, Dr. Lurden? How do we get outside the box to a hall? I'm around the box kind of guy. How do we beat the system? How do we do better for our students and our families? Because they're going to keep coming to that microphone. We're going to go home feeling like, oh, everybody has lost the war. So instead of talking about the war, let's figure out how to beat the system. Because while I love a lot of what you say in here, the scope is too big. It's too broad. We want to, you want to save the world in this document. And I think we need to think about one student at a time. How do we fix that student in that classroom? Or how do we give better resources to that teacher in that classroom, that parent, and that principal to do better for our students? And once we do better for five or six students, hey, next thing you know, it's forty students. Our special ed has grown like this. Autism is on the rise. Nobody's coming. I mean, I, 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 Mr. L, I could ask you about the numbers, and I want to say we're up two hundred and something, maybe more, three hundred students in autism in the last two to three years?
I can't speak to the last two to three years.
Is it more than that?
But I can tell you
Oh, close to that.
Yeah. In the last twenty years, it has gone from end year ninety to eleven hundred.
There you go. So, we're not, the, the state and federal governments have seen these numbers. They all know. It's just getting larger. So how do we, how do we not necessarily pare it down, but how do we identify how to fix it in our district? So that would be the challenge that I have for you. I love this, but can we, can we tilt just a little bit and maybe task our district with, let's, let's think about it. Let's, let's make a good decision versus spending a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars on a study to tell us what you and I know firsthand, and what the board knows firsthand. Maybe we can pause for a minute, get a think tank together, and kind of roundtable what our problems are and how to fix it. And that involves stakeholders. That involves absolutely every form of special ed, special ed teacher there is, and even the principals of what you're seeing. Because the people in the trenches are the ones that see it, and the families. And maybe it's, and maybe we simply need to provide better support for our families. If we can't hire more special ed teachers, maybe we need to do something for our families to give them more re- to give them more resources, that resources to help their kids. Just my suggestions. I love the thought behind this, but I think it's so much bigger than the stock market. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Now, let's talk to...
Can I just make one other comment?
Sure.
It kinda came up. I mean, one of our big glaring issues in this district is that we have a disproportionately high number of kids that have been identified for special ed. I mean, almost one in five kids in our district have been identified for special ed. And so, when you're looking at resources, that's one of the challenges that we have to address culturally as a district, is addressing why so many kids are qualifying when we're five to six percent higher than Stockton and the state average for how many kids are in special ed. So, that's something that we've already begun to work on with our administrators. We're looking at a variety of different ways of approaching it. We're working with our assessors, our psychologists, our speech pathologists. But we're really trying to identify what is going on that we're identifying so many kids in special ed. Because one of the big focuses of the district is we're really focusing on tiered interventions of support. And I think we're, we've been very successful, but we're still over-identifying kids in special ed. And so, that's something that we're working on as a district. And again, when you're looking at resources, if we have less kids in special education, you're already able to maximize the resources that you have.
So, you're saying if we improve processes, if we get the information on how we're currently doing, if we can redesign our current policies and get teachers the training we need, that that would help improve this? So, the request, and a lot of why my report is here is to get this factified. Whether it's a think tank, whether it's an outside vendor, I'm leaving it up to Superintendent Young. They asked for a formal request. For me, I want to see the processes improved ultimately, right? Because like you, I sit here, not only listing the parents, but my observation is the one child that I go home and still is at the same reading level. So, I sit here because of him, to fight, not to turn him, but for every kid. And innovation is what we need, we need to change. Because if the processes continue, if we keep giving the same inputs, right, Dr. Horton? We do the same inputs, we're gonna get the same outputs. So, we need to do something different.
Thank you, Ms. Lenderman.
Certainly, board, this is near and dear to us, because just taking the information that Paul Warren just provided, and if you were to compare where we are, over eighteen percent of our kids are identified in special ed, and you compare that to Stockton, which is at about thirteen percent, and that's the state average, that's over two hundred more students in Loda Unified. And if you were to look at that number of students, and I don't believe there's something in the Loda Unified water, I don't believe, I mean, I believe we have to look internally. Because if that's over two hundred students, and I'm not saying this is an accurate average, and if you were to look at ten to one as an average, cross the SDC mod, severe mild mod, if that's the case, that's about twenty teachers. And if you look at where we are as a district on our staffing, we're about twenty teachers short when you separate the secondary schools and one-twenty's and what you can do, and what you have in our elementary schools. So, I know that we are working now and kind of developing a plan, and it sounds like that is something we can bring back to you, so the board can hear that and get the input on that. Certainly, none of us would want our, a year of a credentialed substitute, because substitutes are credentialed, but it's a different level, okay? They meet the state requirement, but the training is limited. I know our assessment team, I know coach, I mean, everyone is working to provide them support, but it's a challenge. So, certainly looking at that, looking at our service delivery model with mild mod versus being in a general ed classroom with additional supports, or pushing parent educators into a general classroom, those are, I mean, there are different ways we can do it. So, one, we can bring back to you some of the recommended changes that we're looking at making within. And a lot, it's elementary, because that's where they get identified in special education. But also looking at the other end, do we have supports on the back end for a parent to feel confident that... You know, are you confident on the back end that we have support so that students don't need to remain under consult in special education? Because in high schools, I believe we have about four extra teachers just to consult. That means they are a case manager, but they, student is not in a special education classroom needing specific supports. So, on both ends, we have to look internally and say, okay, you know, we have some work to do within our systematic approach, multi-tiered systems of support. Make sure what we have, that you have authorized as a board, that you've put money behind with tier-two interventions to provide that. So, we could certainly start there. It's difficult, it's the start of the year, to put more weight on school sites with what they're already trying to get up and running. But we can certainly provide that information as the next step, if that's your interest. Or if you want us to see if there's outside groups that can provide us input, again, that's the will of the board, and my job is to do the will of the board. So, I don't know how you want to proceed, but that is one way we can look at it for an audit.
No, thank you. I'm gonna say something that might not come across pleasant, but I would like for us to be very cautious as we proceed. As members of public service, we hold immense responsibilities of being fiscally responsible to our children, first of all, and our community. Personal interests set aside. I want to make sure whatever we proceed from here on this does not give any specific advantage to anybody in particular. So, if you can bring us back something that would help all students across the board, special ed being a major part of it, I would like for us to do so, and I'm sure the board agrees with it. I'll ask all of you to individually just kind of send in your responses in email if you would like to, if today is not a good time to decide. This is a report being presented by one board member, and all board members will be required to kind of think about it, work on it, give it a thought process before we say, here's a bunch of money and time we want the district to spend. So, cautiously proceeding, I would request all board members to send in their answers about how and what piece of this particular report would you like for the cabinet to proceed with? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we would have to bring that back.
Yes.
So that it is in public, and obviously, as individual board members, you can provide input, but collectively, that really gives us our direction.
Yeah.
And that would have to be in public.
And we can be CC on the other board members as you send in your response, so it's not any kind of Brown Act violation or something like that.
Or I would recommend that you send it to me, I pull it all together.
Sure.
And sharing it equally, so board's aware. But really, we'd have to come back and publicly discuss it, so the public has input and is hearing this happen in a public setting.
That's fine. Thank you.
Can you figure out the financial piece of what a study like that would also cost to include, just say, different layers of where we could, you know, maybe we choose one and three versus one or two, you know?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and I would think two in particular, FICMAT and West Ed, do this scope of work.
But to look at it from not a whole specific, but maybe pinpointing ideas, and we build that, we start a foundation and build that.
Sure.
Okay.
Leave that direction, but I have one question, couple of things, well, one thing really to say. First of all, Ms. Lenderman, it's difficult to go out on a diving board by yourself in what you did today, I thought was very courageous. And you're also the, trying to be the voice of the voiceless. There's a lot of parents just don't know all the walls that are put up for special ed, and all the ways to get around it, and compliance, and so forth. Mr. Warren, I think you're very frank and honest and transparent. And you talked about you need resources. Those are the things I want to hear, what do you need from us? And those are the things that we need to find out as a board member to help you do your job. And the same thing. There are pieces in here that I really like a lot, but I look at it as a global situation. I like to see us do a transparent look at everything we do in terms of what you brought up here, going from consistent grading that Ms. Peterson brought up, rubrics for across the board in high school. I mean, we can go on and on and on. But this is a great start, and you're talking, dealing with a child that lately has been taking a hit, because we have no more department of ed, I believe, is that correct?
I haven't read the details of the Supreme Court and where it stands for the short term.
That's where we probably had it. Anyway, I really want to applaud you for that, for doing that. And I think it's wonderful that you stood up and spoke for a lot of people that maybe can't. So, I'm really proud as a board member.
Any other more comments? Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Lenderman. I think we've given some direction as a board to Mr. Young and follow the beginning of that comment. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Do we have any board advisory committee reports? All right. Comments from the public? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. A twenty-minute period is allocated for the public to address board on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If there are numerous speakers, speaker time may be adjusted. To share materials with the board, please provide them to the staff for distribution. Due to restrictions under California Brown Act, the board cannot engage in discussion regarding public comments. Please take your first and last name as you come up to the podium. Anne Swela Garcia?
Thank you, Dr. Ball. You do a great job of my name, Anne Swela Garcia. For the last month, I've been working for Leah Thanks for new teachers. We gathered gifts that teachers donated to. We organized shirts for new teachers. Today, we served lunch to seventy-ish new people, and we're talking about the association. Want to shout out to our coaches that are working in new teacher boot camp, there are members as well. When I tell people about my job, I tell them that I love my school, I love my colleagues, I love my families, I love my site admin. I'm involved in teen teaching that's organized by Gentilet with Lisa Cannon and Teachers College. I've been a mentor to a tip mentor to a resident, I mean, a mentor to a resident, I've been a tip mentor to a new teacher, and I love all those things. This summer, I volunteered to move my room two doors down, which doesn't sound bad, but I've been in my room for about fifteen years, and I have a lot of things, because I teach kindergarten these days. And I've been there probably fifteen days, and I'm not done, on my own time, unpaid. I did it for my team, because it was important for RTK. And while I do all those things, what I don't tell the teachers is, when I'm doing those things, and I'm thinking about these things at night, I do get frustrated. Again, I'm gonna bring it back to the COLA, because at the last meeting, there was a budget passed and the slides not shared publicly. They were on the agenda, but there was no presentation. And there was thirty-two million dollars in books and supplies. And 1.5 of that thirty-two million dollars of books and supplies, I buy my own Tyka Roga pencils, could go for teachers. And congratulations on your contract, and this is not personal. But I'm assuming he got a three percent automatic raise, the superintendent did. The contract wasn't on the agenda, I looked for it. I don't know where the paperwork is, I think that has to be public. If the budget has that money, and you know the teachers, I have a teacher that sent me a picture, she's been working in her room. She moved also twenty-two hours of her own time. And so, to get a measly thirteen hundred dollars for someone like me, it's not very, I mean, it's a lot, but it's not a lot when I'm in there for fifteen days of my own time. When there's thirty-two million dollars in books and supplies and a nine thousand dollar, three percent automatic raise, I ask you to consider it to be fair to all teachers to be retro for the entire year. We did all the work, we worked a hundred and eighty-five days. Some teachers worked a hundred and eighty-eight days. The money's there, you can do it, and start out the year with a great positive moment for the people that are in the trenches. And I do want to say, I wish we could comment during reports, because I'm not extra identifying kids. I have kids coming to my room with more needs than ever. Mrs. Peterson has been to my room. It's like this, keeping everyone safe. And so, the more support we can give, the better off our students will be. And it starts by respecting and acknowledging us. Thank you.
Julie Armstrong?
Good evening, School Board President, Dr. Ball, and Superintendent Mr. Young, and the members of the board. My name is Julie Armstrong, and I'm here tonight to respectfully share some ongoing challenges regarding the transitional kindergarten, or TK. Classroom setup at John Muir for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As a dedicated educator, I understand that transitions and changes are part of our job. However, the process of moving into a new classroom this summer has required a tremendous amount of time and physical labor. I've been at school at least twenty days this year, and I'm leaving at eight o'clock at night. I had spent countless hours cleaning the new classroom, clearing out the previous teacher's classroom materials. It had a long-term revolving sub and a special ed classroom. And that position hasn't been filled for two years. And reorganizing the space to make it as safe and welcoming for our youngest learners. This was time I could have spent preparing lessons, organizing curriculum, and planning for a strong start to the school year. In addition, the flooring in the classroom remains an issue. The original carpet from nineteen ninety-four is not only outdated, but it is worn through in places and poses safety concerns in this classroom, as well as others in my pod, or my pod. The TK classroom floor was supposed to be replaced, I thought, and yet, nothing has happened. This delay affects not only my classroom's cleanness and aesthetics, but also the health and safety of our students. The TK-specific furniture, which is essential for developmentally appropriate instruction, did arrive, but many pieces were damaged. While some replacements have been provided, not all of it has been assembled. I am still without a full functional classroom furniture needed to support a TK program. As the school year starts quickly approaching, these delays put our instructional readiness at risk. Finally, one of the most significant concerns is the complete lack of designated storage for our TK outdoor equipment. As a requirement by the state, essential for developmentally appropriate physical learning, these materials are not optional. They are vital, yet we currently have nowhere to securely and safely store them, which again, puts us behind providing our students with what they need. I am proud to be a new TK teacher and excited and welcome to welcome new learners into our school, but these infrastructures and logical issues are hindering our ability to do what is best for our kids. I respectfully ask that the board to prioritize and resolve these issues urgently, specifically, immediate meaning attention of classroom flooring, supporting and completing furniture, and replacing the damaged items, and permanent solution for the safety and secure of TK outdoor equipment and storage. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Julie, is John Muir, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Jen Castle?
Hi, my name is Jen Castle. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to talk to you just for a few minutes about cycle of inquiry. And I know there's people in the room who remember that era of Loda Unified, where we looked at cycle of inquiry, right? There was a graphic, we did all these meetings, and we were told, you ask the questions, you research, you bring up... you research, you bring up the data to investigate those questions, and then you innovate. And I don't know, I think maybe it's out of fashion, you just don't really hear about that anymore, but it seems like we still should follow that model. I've been watching board meetings for nineteen years. My mom was elected to this board in two thousand and six. She sat up there for twelve years. I watched every meeting. I've been Courtney Porter's campaign manager for two election cycles, so I've watched the last seven years of his tenure on the board, so I've been watching for nineteen years. These board meetings, so important that they are open, public forums. If you discuss issues among yourselves and you CC or BCC each other, that's actually Brown Act violation. The meeting is supposed to be public. You are supposed to encourage discourse with your constituents, and I just think that that's worth reminding. Never in my nineteen years of watching board meetings have I seen more unhappy sped families come to this podium than I have in the last couple of years, and I am moved by that, and I think you should be as well. What a shame that we're not reading that room a little more appropriately. Mrs. Lenderman, I want to thank you for bringing up your very good idea, and I want to remind everyone, I operated as a campaign manager for years and years. Mrs. Lenderman, unseated and incumbent, he came in last. She was pretty transparent about this issue, and I think that's worth bringing up and being super public about, that this issue matters to a lot of people. And if we have a greater population, perhaps we have a greater need, and I want people to remember that, please. Thank you.
Comments from employee group representatives? The representative from each employee group will have five minutes to comment on non-agendized items, please. Thank you.
Thank you, President Dr. Ball. So my Vice President, Anne Swela Garcia, took a lot of the things that I was going to say today about welcoming new teachers into the district. It was a joy to meet them. The district has approved the hiring of over sixty teachers since June, including on the agenda tonight, and I'm hearing there's more in the pipeline. The good news is, what I heard is we're down to twenty-three vacancies in special education, which is the lowest that I can remember in a long, long time. But I'm still hearing, and I don't know, because I have not been able to confirm this, that there's about forty gen ed openings. And again, we need to have a credential teacher in every classroom. That's something that's really, really important for all learners. Again, I came up here before to acknowledge Mrs. Lenderman bringing up her report, and I think it's important. And I just want you to know, the board to know, that I have talked to special education teachers, they're excited about this. They want to participate. So you're talking about doing some sort of a round table. I have people lined up contacting me saying, hey, how's this going to be done? I want to volunteer. So believe me that this is something that teachers are concerned about. They're willing to give their time and their knowledge to help find out some of these things and to support what she's doing because that supports their students. So, you know, thank you, Mr. Porter, for saying that, yeah, she's diving off, she's diving off the diving board by herself, but we all need to be there in the pool to support her and make sure that, you know, everything is done safely and openly. Okay? I love the fact that she brought this forward to make it open. The other thing that I noticed in the agenda tonight was the cell phone policy, and it's great that we have something up on the website, but I have said this before and I'm going to continue to say it again, how is this going to be communicated to our students and to our families other than the website? We should have signage at every site. We should have, for those in secondary where you have the planners, it needs to be in the planners. It needs to be discussed. We need to be discussing it at the school night so that parents know, you know, we have to, it's been approved by the board, we have not done anything to communicate this, and I have spoken with this to Mr. Dawson as well, saying, what are we going to do to make sure that everyone knows that this is going to be the way it's going to be? Because if you don't communicate, if you don't set those expectations, they are going to not be met. We are all told in our classrooms, set high expectations, the students will rise to meet them, but we have not localized these expectations and to students, to parents, and even to teachers. And I'm going to say, because there are teachers that, you know, let kids have their cell phones out, and that becomes a problem for the rest of us who make them put it away. So, yeah, I think that we need to be doing more around this because it is really important. Every study that I have seen says that getting rid of the cell phones increases engagement, and that's our number one problem. I taught, I teach every year at AAUW, American Association of University Women Camp for eighth grade girls called Tech Trek. I spent a week in June in Fresno, and we make them put their phones away. And I will tell you, every, the last meet, at the last meeting, we're all getting together and everyone's, you know, kind of crying, but we're also doing our recap, we ask, how did you guys do for a week without a cell phone? And everyone says, I didn't miss it. I enjoyed talking to people and doing things, and we kept them busy from seven in the morning to ten at night. They didn't miss it. Okay? But we didn't give them the opportunity, but we write out, when they apply, we tell them, you're going to have to put your cell phone away for a week. Okay? When they accept, because it costs us money as an organization to send them, it costs about two thousand dollars a student to send them, we make them sign, hey, you're going to lose your cell phone for a week. Hasn't been a problem. We got to do the same thing. Let them know what the expectation is and that we're going to expect our students to rise to meet it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to comments from board members.
You know, I am super excited for all the opportunities to come. Thank you for your guys' feedback because, again, the report is not just, I mean, I put ideas together, right, but as a collective, we are, we are a collective board, not an individual person. So sometimes we just have to throw ideas out there to see what sticks. And if we don't come up with new ideas, if we don't innovate, we will not change to where we need to be and how we can help our constituents, our administrators. I mean, they're overtaxed. Look at Paul, he looks exhausted and a lot more gray hair, so maybe a little bit more. So I, I see the impact of stress on, on these individuals and on us, and so if we, if we look at what we can do and what we can, and maybe it's not boil the ocean, and maybe it's one step at a time, but I think one step, even if we took one step today, it's one step closer to where we need to be. So, that's it.
In my travels refereeing, I visit many high schools, and they all have wellness centers. Do we have wellness centers at our schools? High schools?
I'd have to get clarification on what you mean when you say wellness center, but if it's what I understand, no.
Yeah, these are centers, and I took a photograph of one of them, it was at SoCal High School in Santa Cruz. And I know that they have them throughout the Bay Area. It's a place for students to go if they're struggling with a variety of issues, right? And in there, they have a counselor, they have avenues for, if it's more severe, for the students to seek self-help and so forth. And they get a pass from the teacher and so forth. So I thought it was kind of quite fascinating. I took a picture of the one from SoCal. Goes all the way down to different things, different items for the students, and it seems pretty commonplace in the Bay Area. I asked numerous people that I was roughing with and coaches and so forth, and they said, oh, yeah, we have a wellness center for kids to go to when they seek issues, and the teachers can just send them a referral, and they go immediately to get help. So I thought that was kind of interesting. I've never heard of it before. I was just wondering, had we looked upon that as something we could do at our schools? A place where kids can seek refuge? Maybe mom and dad are getting divorced, maybe, I don't know, or in a bad grade in English? I don't know, but it helps them deal with, a place to go for a variety of issues.
Bear Creek is opening one this year, I've come to understand via text message that I just received.
And your phone is, oh, naughty boy. No.
There's no signage up yet.
So Bear Creek is doing it. I applaud Bear Creek, but shouldn't this be something we do at most of our high schools? Are they having such certain issues?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no comment, but I just mentioned that Sierra Middle School has a center.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Again, this should be across the board.
Just real quick.
Just real quick here, I'd like to thank Ms. Letterman for all of her efforts she put into that report and bringing it out because it's sometimes very hard to bring out personal stuff because, and you see it closely, I mean, it affected our family. And I also agree with Lisa that we really do need to communicate the cell phone thing because I see more flashback, lowback, I guess is my word, coming from parents and even students, because my kid needs it kind of thing, and I really think we need to communicate it. I know we're really trying to, but I think that should be a priority. And that, I know there's a ton of books on the subject, but one, a good one about cell phones and other environmental factors is called Stolen Focus by Jonathan Hari. That's quite interesting, and it talks about environmental factors, not just the cell phone, but and how it affects everybody to sign people study to get people addicted to it. It works.
Point of clarification, we are sending out signage to all the high schools. That is happening, and it's not just a website. There is communication that is coming from the high schools with their student communities and their families. This is a reference point on the website for people to go to to clarify things like, my child's a diabetic. Does that mean they won't be able to access their Dexcom app to know what their glucose level is? And those are some of the clarifications we have on the frequently asked questions page. But communication is happening. I know this because I've had students emailing me trying to come up with reasons not to follow it. So I just want to clarify that for everyone, that is part of our plan that is rolling out as the school year is soon beginning.
Just real quick, I wanted to come in the district and I got some early numbers. I know it's not formal yet, but there's kids that took the AP Spanish test, did, what I'm hearing is incredibly well, there were some, quite a few fives is what I'm hearing. So hats off to everybody who worked on that project to be able to qualify those students. I was excited to hear, and I can't wait to see what happens in the upcoming when we get the firm number, so hats off to Cerner.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment and send out some well wishes for the new school year. I wish everybody patience with the construction, consistency with the cell phone process and procedure, but mostly all the joy and excitement of meeting your new students, and remember every time they smile at you, you've made an impression on them. And I'd like to wish Dr. Ball a happy early
You didn't wake, I knew you did. I won't tell you when because that might be, you know, very soon.
Not potential anymore.
Not potential, I won't.
Twenty of us, we have twenty-nine. Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you all for your kind comments to, to your public here, and I wanted to stress on the fact that our sixth grade report card changes will bring such a challenge to the fifth, sixth combo. I think our aim should be to not have a fifth, sixth combo. I think that's quite a disservice to our children. My, my older one, who's twenty-two now, was in a second, third combo, and he was absolutely devastated because he didn't know where he belonged. So, yeah, I think our, our aim should be to not have a fixed fifth, sixth combo as we roll in this report card change that we're doing. I think parents will have an easier time, children will have an easier time. I wish we could, but we're not voting on that. I just wish everybody a good, happy, and successful coming new school year. A lot of work has been done. A lot of people have been working very hard through the summer, and it's still continuing, and I appreciate every single person who got out there in the summer heat to do all those projects, the construction that's going on, and we may not complete in time, but I'm sure we're working hard on it. Thank you for putting those extra classrooms in Larson. That was quite a daunting task and really, really, I know the public and the students appreciate what you all have done for them. Thank you. Cell phone policy. How many of us put our cell phones down during dinner? Now we're going to expect our high schoolers to do it all day long. So let's give them some kudos as they come in, let's give them some boost and confidence as they come in that you could do it. We're here to help you. It's for your own good, and good luck saying that to a teenager, but I wish everybody in the high schools good luck in this project. As far as our special ed, it holds a special place in every single person in this room's heart, as I saw, as we all talked about it. There's not a single person I've ever spoken to who hasn't said that we need to fix it, we need to do something about it. So a step at a time, a green at a time, we get this done, and all the effort that's going to go in as you get these reports together, I appreciate. Thank you, everybody, for a good, long board meeting, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.